Is he here for something?
Who?
EMAs open?
Hold on, I don't know.
This is here.
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. Palate scale?
Air tanks they gotta wear or something, is that why? I have no idea. You ready, good? Yeah, it doesn't break it down though.
Alright, call meeting in order, everybody can arrive. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Rebus.
Here.
Councilmember Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessup.
Here.
Councilmember Pappra.
Here.
And Councilmember Sims.
Present.
Seven present.
And accounted for. Um, next, approval of regular council meeting minutes for August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Looked approved.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, first reading please.
Notice as everybody given the taxpayers of Porter County Indiana that the proper legal offices of Porter County go into Porter County government administration building located one fifty-five Indiana as a buffer is of Indiana September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one at five thirty PM to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year twenty-twenty-one and to transit any further business which will come before it happens. General fund, sheriff, six thousand five hundred dollars. Circuit court, five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Federal DOC, uh, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Tax sales, PFA, twelve-on-three, forty thousand. Sales disclosure fund, eleven thirty-one, uh, thirty-two thousand one sixty-six. Memorial Opera House Fund, forty-nine fifteen, a reduction in salaries spiked at per total fifty-seven thousand nine fifty-seven and five cents. JDC Codes Fund, forty-nine oh six, one thousand one hundred and twenty. Prosecutors, eight hundred and twenty, forty-nine twenty, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Family Court Salvation Fund, ninety-one thirteen, one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Garcia Guardianship Grant, ninety-one sixty-seven, thirty thousand dollars. And TCC RBC tourism, uh, a total of eight thousand dollars. Taxpayers appearing of such needs shall not directly be heard there under appropriation of the assistance fund made. Will be referred to the insurance department of local government to receive a certified copy of the actions taken and where applicable, the DLG will recommend surrendering the assistance fund. If your man is out of the Porter County double service.
Alright, thank you. Circuit Court Judge Mary DeBoer. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, hello, good evening.
Welcome.
So, there's an additional in front of, uh, everyone for five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to family house, the reason to pay remainder of the twenty-twenty-one bill for CASA and family house.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Just wanna do the additional right now?
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for the additional, discussion.
Looks as if there's a lot of, uh...
Yeah.
CASA, uh, information and just tell us a little bit about what's going on with...
Why we're here.
Yeah.
So, so what has happened is, in the past, well before I, I came on board, at some point we started, we didn't have enough allocated to that line item. And we would be behind, um, by December. So, it's, instead of that being brought to the attention of one of us, the judges, um, it sat until January, which then we were paying out of our fresh funds for last year. So then it just kept building until it got to a point where finally somebody said, hey. And so part of it was not having enough allocated in the line item, part of it was a slip-up on not carrying over what was there to the next year so that it would defray some of that. And then some of it was billing practices on the part of the agencies, which we now have made clear to them that we need to make sure that we get them early enough in December so that everything is covered to pay. But we've tried to adjust for the, uh, deficiency with next year's line items increased in those two areas. One is a matter of, the CASA was a matter of adding two dollars to the budget to make sure that everything was adequate to get covered. So that, that will take care of that. The other one, we needed to increase by five hundred and eighty-five dollars, I believe. So then we'll be square on both of those agencies and now we're aware of what to look out for.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Get a roll call, Madam Auditor, on the additional.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappra.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Alright, there's a couple, a couple transfers also in front of you. Transfer three hundred dollars, um, from office fixtures under one hundred dollars to uniform and clo- clothing. Reason, need to purchase a new judicial robe. There's some more transfers, I'll go on. Two thousand dollars from legal to CASA program. Fifty-five hundred dollars from consultants to CASA program. Two thousand dollars from training and education to CASA program. Nine thousand dollars from mental health drug courts CASA program. Fifteen hundred dollars from interpreter to CASA program. Five thousand dollars for maintenance agreements to CASA program. Three hundred dollars from equipment other than vehicles to CASA program. Eight hundred and ninety-four dollars from toxology lab to CASA program. Twelve hundred and six dollars from toxology lab to family house.
Make the motion on both.
Reason to pay remainder of the twenty-twenty-one bills for CASA house, motion.
Second.
All the transfers, second, on the transfers, discussion? Nope, all in favor of the transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superior Court, one. It says guardianship grant fund, additional thirty thousand dollars to consultants. Reason, um...
I don't think it's an additional thirty thousand, just reappropriation for monies that we already have. Paid for this.
How do you pronounce is just the acronym? What's that?
VASIA.
VASIA grant, fu- provides funds to Indiana guardianship services who serve as court-appointed guardians over the person and/or estate for incapacitated adults who have no other persons able and/or willing to serve as guardians on their behalf. So...
Now, is this the same program that's, uh, that they're doing for Porter County aging community services?
Mr. Wyatt?
Porter County aging community services also have a, uh, a program, uh, similar to this, but these are separate?
I'm unaware of that. This is a grant that we apply for annually and so these are funds that, um, ultimately fund the new guardianship services who ask, ask the guardians whether they're incapacitated adults who don't have anybody else to fulfill that role.
So you did, this has been going on for quite a while?
Um, I can't tell you for how long exactly, I think it's newer in terms of the features. This is not the first reappropriation that we've had.
Mr. President, I'd make the motion.
Second.
There's a motion, a second for the additional, further discussion? We get a roll call on the additional for the grant fund?
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappra.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
There you go.
Have a good day.
Have a good evening.
Tourism. Looks like, uh, a couple of additionals from the tourism fund. Two thousand dollars to disposal. Increased visitation at the visitor's center necessitated having trash and recycle pickups changed from twice monthly to weekly. There's a second additional, six thousand dollars data processing equipment. Line item depleted due to purchasing three new computers, a new data server and network switch. Good evening.
Good evening.
Couple additionals in front of you.
Make the motion on both additionals?
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, discussion.
Need of computers. How's, how's your revenue going?
How's our what?
How's your revenue going?
Um, our revenues increased, uh, is well, very well this year, uh, Bob. We're very fortunate because we have the national and state park and outdoor recreation. It's one of the things that actually saved our destination.
Till the water was polluted. Said till the water was polluted.
Yeah, we're not really, it's not a good topic.
No, it's not. Is the pavilion open yet?
It's not, it's my understanding they're not gonna open that till spring of next year. So, again, COVID has caused equipment issues, you know, labor shortages, and that's our understanding.
Further discussion? Get a roll call on the two additionals.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappra.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
And Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Lorelei, did you talk to Joy?
I did, I lost you on Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Yes, no problem. Development stormwater management, it's like Keen Bridge Fund. Transfer seven thousand five hundred and six dollars from culverts to maintenance agreements. Reason to cover annual maintenance agreements for ESRI, county GIS. Another transfer under the same Keen Bridge Fund. Fifteen hundred dollars from culverts to telephone to cover cellphone and GPS services through remainder of the year due to additional jetpacks and GPS devices. That's the first one under Keen Bridge Fund. He thinks you're flying around.
Oh, I'm going with that, I don't know what it is, but I like that.
Continue on?
Deficiency.
I'll continue on, plan commission then, if you want.
Yeah, rule them off.
Plan commission fund, there's a transfer, twelve thousand dollars from consultants to maintenance agreements. Reason, to cover annual maintenance agreement for ESRI, the county GIS and permitting software. Another transfer, two thousand dollars from software legal notices to cover legal notices for BZA and BZA hearing officer variant, officer variances. So there's four transfers in front of you from Keen Bridge Fund and Plan Commission Fund.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor for all transfers, discussion, questions?
Yeah, so Bob, the only question I'd have is, so the additionals for the maintenance agreements, is that they mid-year came in with an increase of some sort, or did we expand services or...
No, annual maintenance agreement for the, uh, ESRI software or GIS is usually due at this time. Um, and we had some other items come up, so the budget was low, so we had to do the transfers, or basically that covers all the software maintenance we need and all the seats available for our office, which we do have a number of seats, cause we use GIS up there rather frequently.
So it was, it was more than anticipated, is that safe to say?
Um...
He took money out of them.
No, we had other maintenance agreements that came up and we had to take care of solving and we just went down. It, it's not more, it's, a lot of that is coming up because of the permitting software we have coming through, which is attached to our GIS network.
Have we adjusted the budget for next year to reflect this number?
We try to, yes, we did. As best we can, yes, we were trying to outlook at all of our costs.
Further discussion? All in favor of the four transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Great evening.
Thank you.
Nice mask. Great. Treasure, Michelle Clancy, tax sales fund, tax sales fees fund, additional forty thousand dollars contractual services. Reason, tax sale, estimated fees to be collected for redeemed sold twenty-twenty-one tax sale properties. Forty thousand dollars additional.
So we're kinda funding the money out there and it'll be appropriated, or...
Uh, basically this is collected throughout the year, but it's put into our tax offer system, which is not in the funds. It's why we go through it to my funds, where I have to pay the bills and then it's settled and the money gets refunded back.
Thank you, I'd make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor, further discussion? If not, we get a roll call.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappra.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Britton.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You. Prosecutor, um, prosecutor discovery fee fund. Um, Gary reached out to Joy, um, I followed up with a phone call and talked to Gary, he had a conflict, so I told him that I would represent this additional, he said he's just trying to allocate it, um, he's got a couple ideas, he may need to spend the money. It's two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to office supplies, need to appropriate line item for this fund.
What's his ideas to spend the money?
He said something about air purifier, else if we, at any point in time, if, um, he had anybody to work from home, maybe a laptop computer or so, those were the two ideas he floated out there, just appropriate this money.
Thank you.
I do need a motion. It's a motion.
Second.
Second. Motion is second on the floor, I appreciated him reaching out, um...
So he's just depleting that fund as...
I, I feel like, yeah, that he was just appropriating it in case he needed it, yes.
Oh, that's everything, that's everything, okay.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor for the additional, can we get a roll call? Adam, auditor. Is there something wrong? Did we, did I do something wrong?
You have to add additional, right?
Yes, the additional, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to office supplies.
Councilmember Pappra.
Prosecutor Discovery Fee Fund.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
Is there something wrong, Madam Auditor?
If this is for a computer, is that what you said?
He said may, he said it was just appropriated and he thought, you know, they're...
He can't buy out of that money, he has to come out there.
Okay.
He'll have to come back for a change.
Figure that out.
He'll figure it out.
Can he get an air purifier from that line item?
No. You guys will audit any, anything he sends down to your office, right?
Yeah.
Tell them if it's good or not good, right? Can't pay it.
Why do we transfer? They can't use it.
They want it as miscellaneous. They're after the miscellaneous.
Well, alright, we got the sheriff in front of us. Sheriff General Fund, additional sixty-five hundred dollars to uniforms and clothing. Reason to cover the cost of uniforms for patrol, including new hires. I'll keep going if you want, there's a, um, federal prisoner DOC General Fund, additional one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars contractual services to cover the cost of services for summer, summerill, summerill to increase our US Marshals federal prisoner rate. Jail Adult Community Corrections Grant Fund, that's a transfer, seven thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents from salaries to hourly, Form 144. Um, I believe, and we, we can scratch out the thirty thousand dollars to twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, it's just the Form 144 is hourly up to sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents, is that correct? So, um, so the Form 144 change would just be hourly up to sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents. The reason full-time caseworker resigned and replacement still in college will be hourly until the first of the year. So you've got a couple additionals and a transfer and a 144 in front of you.
Make a motion on all of it.
Second.
Motion and a second on the, uh, additional, transfer 144, discussion.
So is that position January one going back to thirty thousand?
No, no, I, I, I did that mistake. I just need the part time for this year and she's gonna be full-time.
Can you explain what summerill is?
Twenty-five words or less?
No. As long as you need.
Summerlong, summerill is the company that we contracted about nine months ago to do the, um, proposal on the, the increase of the federal inmates. So they're out of EC and, uh, they're the ones that approached us, um, and...
So it's a one-time fee service, we're done with them now?
Well, it wasn't gonna cost us anything if he couldn't get us an increase in the housing. So it was based on the increase from what it was to what he could change it to. We're paying him that for, for three months, for how many federal inmates we have, so we really don't know, it's probably not gonna be this much, but we really don't know how much it's gonna be, it depends on how many feds are in every day and the difference. So we're making the same we are now, it's just that we have to pay him now because that was the contract to, yeah, you need to do it.
Say that again, I'm sorry, say, what are we paying?
So, he, he, we are paying him, we, you know, fifty-six, seventy-five, that's what he got us at. So we're paying him that difference per inmate, per day, for three months.
So without his help, you wouldn't have got the increase.
Oh, no, we, we tried to...
So it's very necessary.
Yeah.
Is your increase in effect now?
Yes, effective since August first.
Yeah, this money's going to him.
So the first three months of all the increase goes to him, so it's...
It's still a good deal for us because it's a one-time deal and we're gonna make, you know, total over two million dollars a year, so...
Pretty good deal for him too.
Although it sounds pretty good, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but, um, you know...
Sure there was a lot of work involved, the way you did too, with the studies and...
And the last guy who did it charged, uh, didn't get the increase and he still charges.
Not this one.
Yeah. And that was all stipulated in the contract, it was approved by the commissioners and... And they all understood and agreed on it.
It's not bad, so three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars worth of work for the guy.
Why are we down on the uniforms, so is that a...
We're out of money in uniforms.
Just a lot of hires this year, you're turning it over quick, or what?
Yeah, well, no, um, well, we've had new hires, so the best...
Expanding?
Yeah, and plus we just don't have enough in uniforms to even cover regular clothing.
Are we good next year's budget for that, have you guys?
Uh, no, I, well, yes, I, I will...
Depends on where we are.
Depends on where, where it is, Thursday.
Depends on a lot, right?
Oh, it's Thursday, you guys are here?
I don't want you, uh, approve.
So, now that we've started the budget session.
I just wanna ask, I don't want you surprised, Thursday.
You just wanna get right to it?
Yeah.
Alright, you guys open the sheriff's budget. Alright, there's a, um, couple additionals and a transfer 144, any further discussion?
Second.
Motion second? Guess I thought we had one, but, further discussion? Yep, yep. Up, both additionals, transfer in the 140, change in the 144. Alright, can we get a roll call, roll call on all of it?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessup.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pappra.
Two or three o'clock or something.
Britton? You said yes, okay, seven zero.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Take care, Thursday.
Take care. See you soon. Memorial Opera House Fund.
I didn't see, I'm hanging out in the back there.
He's been here since nine, nine to five, I think.
He's nine to five? Scott's hanging out in the back?
Jokes, we got jokes.
Takes a long time to get up here from there.
Reduction. Forty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and five cents to salaries, three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to FICA, five thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars to PERF. Reason, reduced line item salaries, FICA and PERF being paid from SVOG grant through balance of twenty-twenty-one, effective pay period seventeen.
Also move?
Second.
Motion is second on the reduction, discussion.
Not used to reductions.
Explanation, Scott?
Sure, so this is just cleaning up from last month when we were in front of you. We had just missed the cutoff with the way the funds were appropriated from SVOG, so it's just to make sure that everything got working last month, so we could start paying our salaries out of this. This is just the housekeeping end.
Excellent, thank you.
We get a roll call on the reduction, please?
Councilmember Rebus.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jessup.
Yes.
Councilman Pappra. And Councilwoman Sims.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
See you later. Clerk, Jessica Bailey, we're gonna move her to the back.
She's been waiting patiently, it's time to go last.
Clerk, General Fund, transfer five hundred dollars from data processing equipment to telephone and internet services to pay for the...
I wanna call MiFi?
MiFi, um, I don't wanna butcher that. Clerk perpetuation on transfer, five hundred dollars from data processing equipment to telephone and internet services to pay for MiFi devices. Clerk 4D Fund, transfer five hundred dollars from data processing equipment to telephone and internet services to pay for MiFi devices, there's three transfers in front of you.
Make the motion on the transfers, all three?
Second.
Motion and a couple seconds, discussion?
Jessica, you just wanna tell us a little bit about the MiFi?
The MiFi.
What is a MiFi?
It's like a little tiny internet, it looks like a hockey puck, looks like a hockey puck. You just take it, it gives you your own internet, um, with having new child support software, we're in a lot of webinars, Zoom meetings, and we have to use our laptops because our virtuals don't have microphone or, uh, video, so to be able to connect to our own internet gives us the ability to participate instead of it continuously going.
Do you guys have county-paid cell phones, or no?
No. But we've had these MiFi's for quite some time, this is just a more appropriate line item for them.
So in other words, if Wi-Fi isn't working, you can use this MiFi.
You can bring one with you, cause my Wi-Fi is not working.
You gotta get off Sprint, Mike, you gotta get off Sprint. Oh, there you go.
Further discussion, questions, comments, all in favor of the three transfers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Oh, you're still here, Board of Elections Registration. General Fund, transfer thou- a thousand dollars from election night workers to telephone, and we're doing the same thing, and internet services pay for MiFi and, uh, transfer three thousand dollars from cons- from...
Contractual.
From something to contractual attorney? From something to a contractual attorney, to pay additional expenses incurred. So, unless it's an off-election year, we gotta run it up a bill down there?
I'll make the motion on both, both transfers and, uh, we appreciate a little bit of discussion on the...
Motion is second on the transfers.
Contractual attorneys.
Um, in twenty twenty, we were involved in a lawsuit with the Secretary of State's office, and, uh, when we received the bill, we paid the bill, and then that put us negative in our account towards the end of the year. We were reimbursed through the insurance agency for that, that was positive to the general fund, but rather than go for an additional, we have funds available in our budget, so we went for a general.
Very good, thank you.
Can I ask, how many MiFi, because that's like, a lot of money for MiFi devices, do you have quite a few of them, or is that...
This is for elections. We do have an election coming up.
Oh, so that's one for that?
So that's going to, that's just like the, um, it'll go for travel board for that election and also for election day and early vote.
And then going forward, you've built that into next year's budget already?
Oh, yeah, it's already...
Great. So that, uh, third, that thirteen four oh zero one is, uh, polling place board, so the transfer from three thousand dollars from polling place boards to contractual attorney, just for the record. So, there's, uh, two transfers, motion of second on the floor, further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We done?
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica.
Health Department. Health Department Fund, you got one, Form one forty-four in front of you, so I'll read through it and then we can get a explanation. Form one forty-four, forty-six thousand, three hundred forty dollars to forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars, Sanitarian, number two, forty thousand, seven hundred six dollars, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. First Deputy, thirty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars to thirty-seven thousand, four hundred four dollars. Second Deputy, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars to thirty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. Third Deputy, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. To thirty-six thousand, two hundred seventy, two hundred seven dollars, Fourth Deputy, and Fifth and Sixth Deputy are the same moves from thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven to thirty-six thousand, two hundred seven. Reorganizing Department, one employee retired, motion on the floor, followed by a second discussion. Want to, do you want to explain what's going on, yeah?
What it is is...
Yeah. Yeah.
She's taking the salary and spending it to another. I made the motion.
Well, there's a mo- there's a motion, a motion on the floor and a second to approve it.
I'm sorry.
So, well, Letty, go ahead.
No, we've been doing this, we're giving out media raises, we have budgets coming up in two days.
Is that what's happening with...
So, yeah.
I don't...
I understand, Bob, let her, let her explain and let's get through it, yep.
Okay, so we've lost two employees already, and one was making forty thousand. I don't want to lose that money, and so what we're trying to do is kind of distribute it to some of the staff. It's, uh, to equalize, uh, some of our salaries. All our inspectors, food and environmental, make forty-nine thousand, uh, five forty-two, except for one. They all do the same job, and so I was trying to bring them so they can all be equal, since they all do the same job. The balance of that, which is going to be sixteen twenty-one, was going to be divided among the clerical staff, which is, uh, the deputies one through six, or rather, actually, one through, yeah, one through six, and so that we don't lose the money.
I'm not saying they don't need a raise, it's just a timeout. We've been doing this every damn meeting.
And we're really close to budgets, so why not?
My question is, how would you lose the money?
I'm sorry, Sarah?
How would you lose the money, isn't that...
What do you mean by losing the money? You don't lose the forty thousand?
Well, the, the, what I don't want, in other words, is that we need to post this position, both of them. And I can't advertise for the forty thousand for that position where, the way it's at, because I'll be bringing somebody with less qualification or less knowledge of the job making over some of the other staff that's already in there. I don't want to do that, so that's why I was trying to bring it down to the salary of the other equal people in there.
So which ones, which, who retired, the...
Uh, the forty thousand, seven sixty, the deputy, yeah, she retired. And if you compare her to the other deputies, she makes a lot more.
So you're bringing that position down?
Right.
And then using that money to bring the, the Sanitarian up?
Up.
Which, to equal the other Sanarian.
Why is one paid higher, has he been here longer, she or she, or is there...
Well, yeah, she's been here longer, and then with the raises, of course, it's going to increase.
But you're going to increase people that haven't been here as long to what he or she's making and not increase her, or him?
That, that forty thousand, uh, forty thousand, when we bring a person in, hopefully we hire somebody, they're going to come down to the salary of the, the thirty-five, nine, three, seven. You see the, there's four, uh, there'd be one, four, five, and six. There's two people, two deputies, two and three, make different, and that's because one of them has been here, what, maybe twenty years? And the other one is our billing person, which requires a lot of responsibility, making sure that money is coming in, whether we have to collect some insurance, it's on property. I'm trying to make sure that we allocate the money based on the job that they're doing, the responsibility. I don't want to bring somebody in making forty thousand dollars when they don't even know the job.
You have the right, don't you, to, to lower that one particular...
Right, and that's what I'm trying to do, is lower it, but I was under the impression that by, if I just lowered it, that, that money, where does it go? You know, am I supposed to come back next month or whatever, and...
Well, let, let me ask you another question. The budget, which we're going to be starting on Friday, um, or Thursday, I'm sorry, how have, how have you, uh, submitted it? With reflecting this, what you're requesting tonight?
Isn't that what we submitted?
That was submitted before the retirement, so that's basically column one is how we submitted it.
So it's not going to reflect this?
No.
The, the total does not change at all. We never make, we always make...
We're trying to work within the same framework.
We always stay within the budget.
I would have to agree with Bob, we shouldn't be doing raises now, we should wait till the budget's, I mean, we're right around the corner. That's my opinion, I'm just going to stop it.
Have you hired anybody?
No.
Have you interviewed anybody?
Um, not, not for the forty thousand position, no.
You'd be two months, three months away from somebody filling this, this position.
I don't think that long, but...
I mean...
For a matter of weeks, I would think.
Yeah, within a week. We have a hard time around, right now, that actually qualifies.
I have a draw my motion.
I just have a question. I think it's admirable for department heads to come and ask for money for their people, they should do that. I was just going to ask, these numbers, the salaries you're coming up with, where are those numbers? Uh, are these your, uh, salary, um, numbers, or are they sort of model comparable to what other people that do this job in other areas are making? Are you comparing, or where are these numbers coming from?
The, the, the number, like, for instance, the forty-nine thousand that I'm trying to raise, that sanitary position two is, we have, well, what is it, four food inspectors? And then we have currently two environmental inspectors. They all make the forty-nine thousand, except for one person. Okay, so we just got vacant positions. And then in reference to the deputies, they're already, those are established salaries that are written.
Okay. I'm just going to plant a seed for the rest of the council and for, I think, the department heads, I mean, we have raises, we have our budget starting Thursday. I'm just going to kind of throw this out there, and this is just my, my thought to share with the rest of our council members and department heads, that, um, you know, I don't think there's anybody up here that doesn't think that our county employees should be paid somewhere top of the state, and that's across the board. But I also think, agree with, with Bob, that, you know, I think, um, from past history with some of the way raises were given, I mean, I would like to have the council really discuss and look at investing in having a wage analysis study done with our county employees, so we can spend our money and give raises wisely and based on data, uh, based on information, uh, with a range. What, what job description do these individuals do? Have, uh, uh, experts come in and guide us as council members, because I think we're charged with compensating our employees, but doing it in a wise fashion, instead of arbitrarily, and just kind of seeing what we have left over and then giving raises out. Anyway, I'm just kind of saying this today, I know we start the budget cycle on Thursday, but to department heads, um, and this would be an investment in our county employees for long term, not just one year, but to be able to make wise, sound decisions on what our people should be paid. And that's why I was asking you, where, and, and I'm sure that, you know, these people deserve whatever, and that's admirable, you should be fighting for money for your people. But I think our responsibility is, is to make sure, again, our, our people are paid competitively, and I think they should be some of the highest in the state. Uh, but with that being said, to do it with data, have good information, make sound decisions as a council, and have a study done, look at a range, what are the job descriptions? Uh, what are the comparisons to other counties, other cities, similar to Porter County, and make a decision? I agree, I think that, um, you know, I don't think at this time of the year to be, you know, looking at giving increases, I know you want to reshuffle, um, and, um, but, um, I don't know if this is the right time to do it.
Well, I think, you know, in her fairness, she kind of presented this to me, and I, I think we can't lose the fact that she's, wants to post a position, um, and, again, the, the position is, is it First Deputy, if I'm right? So, she doesn't want to hire somebody at the higher rate of forty thousand dollars.
But that's a cap, right?
So she's, no, what?
She could go below that, right? She could hire somebody at twenty thousand if she wanted, that's the cap.
I, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, that's a...
So, so she's trying to change this down to thirty-six thousand dollars, but, so then she could post it and hire at thirty-six thousand dollars. But then she's also got an issue that she's got this Sanitarian who's making less than other ones, so she's trying to create some parity while she's posting for an opening within her budget, and she's trying to stay without any additional costs, so, I mean, we have an issue in front of us where she has an opening, and she's trying to bring somebody in at the lower level of that opening.
Yeah, I, I would think that, uh, i- if you look at things separately, I mean, if, if you feel confident, Letty, that you can hire that First Deputy at thirty-six two oh seven, then there shouldn't be any reason why you shouldn't be able to advertise and hire for that lower rate. However, uh, to take the difference and sprinkle it out among other, uh, you know, other employees at the department, I think that's the part that I think would need further investigation and, uh, further study.
And, and that's, because they might, based on a study, they might be entitled to more than that. That's why I was kind of, where do these numbers come from? And, and again, um, you know, to make a decision based on data and facts and, and not an emotional, I'm not saying it's an emotional decision already, we, you want to pay your people money. Uh, I think we want to give them as mu- much money as you can, and that's, and that's admirable, but for us to make a decision based on information, uh, after we have an opportunity to see what is the job description, and that position could be more or could be less, but there would be a range there for us to make a wise decision with, with the finances. And when it comes to compensating our people...
Because that, I'm having, and...
The first, yeah, the first part I see where you just want to even, you know, you want to bring this person up to where they should be, and, and that's pretty much a given. I think the history is showing that that is a, a, a salary that is acceptable, but some of these other ones to, like, take what's left over and pay these other people.
Okay, then just give me the...
I would like to hold off on, I would, I would vote to hold off on that part.
Give me the forty-nine and, how that works.
Well, Letty, you run your department, you know your people, you know what they do. It, it seems fair to me that what you're trying to do is, is logical, you're not asking for any increase. You're doing, I mean, you're doing what's fair for your people. You know what they're getting paid, you know what they do. I don't know how much comparison we need, whether than, because other, other places have more population, more money, more this, more, it's, we've dealt with that before when I was here, it's, it's hard to, hey, this county does this, this county, well, what about our county and...
It, it isn't, was not something that I just said, my office just bringing up salaries. You know, I did talk to Jeremy, I, but I also met with auditors. You know, I didn't want to come and present some crazy idea to you. I don't want to waste my time or yours that way. So I brought up what I thought was doable.
And the, Mike, to your point, the, the, the Sanitarian is not, it's not just an arbitrary number, she's matching what has been existing. I mean, it's been based, how it's based upon, you know, over time, we've gotten there.
We look at that now, though, there's a lot of departments that aren't aligned, and we're going to do that...
Oh, that's fine, you worry about this department, right? And over, and over time, we've sat up here and reorganized.
During budget season, you're right.
And the over, and I know you've been up here before, over time, we've, we've allowed people to reorganize during the, during the ra- the year, as long as they didn't increase. I've, I've been up here long enough to know that.
Absolutely.
That was close to budget season.
I understand that we've already had first reading, I understand that, but I, you know, this one is, she's posting for an opening, so it just, that's why she went forward like, well, I got to lower the salary, but I've got some inequality here, so it's, let me do it now. Which was fine, it's in front of us, we get to make a decision, you know, whether we want to do it or not, but I, I think at minimum, I know, Letty, I'm not sure what you said, give me the forty-nine thousand, but at the end of the, isn't, you want to post for the First Deputy, though, right? Isn't that your opening?
That, yeah.
That you want to go down to, to the thirty-six thousand? But I understand that you're saying, well, just let me equal out the Sanitarian also, so, um...
Is there a motion on the floor?
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, but Harold, I mean, it is withdrawn.
I'm withdrawing my second.
So there's a, so, motion and second has been withdrawn, so there's no action on the floor.
I still have a question, can we pay lower than the salary already, did you guys know, or no? We can't, so...
Now, you need to pay wages stated in the salary ordinance, unless there's a provision to contrary, uh, unless there's, it's stated in the ordinance. And you might recall a few years ago, Councilmember Paparod got the language in the ordinance, and you carried it on for last year's ordinance, well, for this year's ordinance, that gives, uh, department heads flexibility to fill vacancies at a lower rate than what's stated. Uh, as long as they follow those provisions, one of which is that, um, the department head has to tell the auditor's office that you're filling it at a lower rate paid. And also that you, um, submit your proposed Form one forty-four to the council election next year. So, if you have a vacancy, you can fill it at lower than what's stated based on this language. If you didn't have this language there, you would have to pay what the salary rate says.
What's that lang- what's that variance on that language? It's in front of us?
Yes. And that was added, what, two years ago?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to allow the Health Department to advertise for the First Deputy position, uh, which has been forty thousand, seven eighty, uh, but, pardon me?
Seven sixty.
Seven sixty, sorry. Um, but allow them to advertise at the rate of thirty-six two oh seven?
Yes.
I would second, is that it?
That's it.
I would second that motion.
There's a motion of second on the floor to move the First Deputy from forty thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars to thirty-six thousand, two hundred seven dollars, is that correct?
Well, it's going to be, it's not going to be at thirty-six two oh seven, because that would be with the additional of the money that's divided among all the staff, it will be at the thirty-five, nine, thirty-seven.
We want to bring it down to the current lowest paid player.
But what is it?
All right, because then she's, yeah, so whatever left over, she ended up spreading the, the difference out, so, say that number again.
It's, uh, thirty-five thousand, nine, thirty-seven.
Let your advertising, you want to, you want to amend your motion, Mike, too?
Yeah, I, I accept that.
I amend the second.
So, just for clarification, the motion is to approve, um, changing the one forty-four First Deputy from forty thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars to thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So you can advertise and get that person hired.
So motion of second on the floor, further discussion? Can we get a roll call on that?
Uh, Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparod?
No.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivers?
No.
No.
So, we'll see you, uh, in a little bit.
I'll be here.
Extension Office, it's like, Extension General Fund, transfer, two thousand dollars from travel to training and education, reason, needed due to increased use of Zoom. There's another tran-
Jared?
That's a little miss...
I thought we were going to...
You'd like to address the other one, the forty-nine thousand?
Letty?
Letty, hang on. I'd like to address the other one. I, I didn't realize that, that... Letty, come back, come back up.
Hold on. We'll do that again.
Let me just say that it's not because of an increased use of Zoom, it's that we're using Zoom more, we're not going in-person to training.
We'll get to you, we'll get to you in a second. All right, I don't, you're being...
Have a seat, lady.
You're being recalled.
I don't... I, I didn't reali- I, I wanted to address the, the forty-nine thousand. I, I would like to see that one moved up, so that, that's all even. You know? So, I mean, I make a motion to, to increase that.
We want to do this at budget.
Well, we're still within the reason, I mean, I guess my point of view is, is the money is the same, she's not asking for any more money. But, I, I, again, I just would like to address it, and, and if it doesn't make a second, then that so be it, but at least I tried. And if we need to readdress it, when?
What's your motion, what are you asking?
I'd like to make the motion to move that Sanitarian position to that forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two, and make it even. So there's a motion on the floor to, um, change the Form one forty-four for the Sanitarian to, from forty-six thousand, three hundred forty dollars to thirty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars, is that correct? Yes. Forty-nine, five forty-two. Forty-nine thousand, five forty-two.
Does that have the money sprinkled in, the extra, is that really a different number?
We still have...
No, no, I'm just saying, remember she said she added that, this proposed?
No, that was added to the deputies, not for the deputies.
That was only for the deputies, all right, thank you.
Right. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? It's all right, I, I gotta try, that's all I'm doing, I'm trying, I see this as being very fair, uh, appropriate. I've been down to the department several times, I see what the people do. I, I understand the atmospheres of, of working conditions, I, I just think it's the right thing. You know, when, when four people, when five people are doing the same job and four of them are getting paid a little bit more, you know, it's, it's hard to, um, emotions come in a little bit, that's just the human factor. You all know what I'm talking about, because you all, you know, and that's all I'm trying to do, is address it, so at least I can put it out there, if it gets shot down, so be it, but I have to try. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Thank you, guys.
Try, Letty. All right, you want to try this again? There's a transfer, two thousand dollars from travel to training and education, needed due to increased use of Zoom. There's also another transfer, fifteen hundred dollars from travel to furniture fixtures, over one hundred dollars. Need additional two drawer filing cabinets. There's also a Form 144, four-H Operation Manager to Administrative Assistant, reason, update job title to match updated job descriptions. So there's a couple of transfers in front of you, and a, a, it looks like a job description, title change in a 144.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second, to approve the transfers and the 144 title change.
I'd like to know on, on the 144 you're talking about, it's just a change in job title, no change in money or anything?
We're changing the job title because we've actually reassigned the duties for four-H operations under, that's incorporated under our office managers' tasks now. So we kind of rearranged some of those duties to better fit what we're doing in the office right now.
But again, there's no change in money or anything?
No.
Nope, not in front of us. There's a motion and a second on the floor for the two transfers and the Form 144 title change, can we get a roll call on that, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Paparod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Motion passes, he's, he's gone. All right, thank you. IT, looks like, um, IT General Fund, there's a transfer. One hundred and nine thousand five hundred nineteen dollars from salaries to consultants, telephone system updates. Form 144, it looks like, um, there's a change, seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars, Level Two Technician, a decrease.
I'm gonna have a change, I made an error on my 144. The second one should be seventy-one, seven-one-seven to forty-one, eight-eight-two. I submitted the 144 for next year's budget.
Forty-one.
Eight-eight-two.
I'm sorry, which position was that?
Level one technician.
All right, so the Form 144, um, changes will be seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars, Level Two Technician, and seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars to forty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars, Level One Technician. Deputy Director to Deputy Director Cyber Security Engineer, reason, reorganizing IT department for 2021. Changing job title of Senior System Administrator to Level Two Technician. IT Network Manager to Level One Technician and Deputy Director to Deputy Director Cyber Security Engineer with updated Deputy Director Cyber Security Engineer job description. So there's a transfer in front of you for, um, the telephone system update, and it looks like there's a couple reductions, a little, as you would call it, reorganizing the IT department. That was kind of similar, but not.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
But not the same, exactly.
I'll make a motion on the transfer.
There's a motion on the transfer?
Second.
There's a motion and second on the transfer of the hundred and nine thousand five hundred nineteen dollars, discussion on the transfer.
Lee, if you could just walk us through in terms of what sort of updates are actually happening or needed and.
In English, speak, not in.
Sure, sure, so, um, the main problem with our telephone system, which we all know is really bad right now, is, um, we have three widgets, we'll call them, and those widgets process the channeling of all the telephone lines. One widget died, which then put an extra stress on the other widgets, which then caused them to have issues as well. So I have ordered new widgets, but with the COVID chip issues the way they are, I have called everywhere, checked everywhere, and they're telling me it's gonna be the end of December or the first of January before we get them in. And with the huge costs I have to hold in mind.
So what's this money for, the new widgets?
Yes.
Is this the same?
You can't have a county without widgets.
I get that, are we, uh, same telephone system, is, or are you guys going boy for?
No, um, we should update our equipment every five years at the least, and we haven't done that, so we, we were due anyways.
It's an upgrade, not the same equipment.
It's an upgrade.
Okay. Thank you, super widgets. For a hundred and nine thousand, they better be.
And is that, so transferring it to consultants, is that the right account, does that make the motion?
Um, because it is our consult, our telephone consultant who's taking care of the task, yes.
So is it, is it consulting services for a hundred and ten thousand, or is it part of the future system as well?
It is all to consultants because our consultants are handling everything for the update.
So is that a contract that's been reviewed and approved by the county commissioners?
All right, further discussion on the transfer? All in favor of the transfer signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we got the Form 144, a couple reductions in front of you, Level Two Technician, Level One Technician, little reorganization, what's?
You're not doing the Level One Technician or the Systems Administrator other than changing the title now?
Is this correct? The, the Level Two Technician used to be my position before I was promoted.
You were the Network Administrator?
Correct.
Or Manager, so you're bringing that down to six?
Correct.
The Assistant Administrator, go play that.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just in the last room, I'm bringing that salary down to fifty-eight. And then the, the, uh, Network Administrator, I'm not really sure what that was, that carried over before me, there's a position that was never filled.
Is, Lee, is there, is there an easy way to explain how some of these changes are so significant, and are there people in those positions now, or?
Um, due to some structuring in the office before me, our salaries got really kind of skewed, I'm trying to be politically correct here, skewed so that some of our level, our lower-level grunt work technicians were making high salaries. So I'm just trying to put everything back in line to, most data processing centers are structured by a little tier-one, tier-two, tier-three structure. And I took the salaries, I took Monster, Glassdoor, salaries.com, and then I compared counties with the same sa, population as we do, averaged out those salaries, and this is what really should be paid.
So do you have, so Level Two Technician, you're taking from seventy-two thousand to fifty-eight thousand?
There you go, Mike.
Is there a person in that role today making seventy-two thousand dollars?
There is not.
Pardon me?
There is not.
And then the Level One Technician, is there someone making seventy-one, seven-seventeen that you're proposing to go much lower?
Yes.
Like a twenty, thirty thousand dollar decrease?
I would, the Level Two was my salary before I was promoted. And I'm dropping that because that person really won't have the duties. They're for seventy-one thousand. The next one was a position which was never filled, I don't know what that title was even for. And I need a second position at forty-one, eight-eight-two.
So the budget that you proposed will reflect this, that?
That is correct.
That's great. Well, I, I make a motion that, uh, does be approved. There's nobody.
There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second.
It's not being sprinkled anywhere on the.
For the Form 144.
What, Dixie does?
Um.
Jeremy said it.
For the Level Two Technician, Level One Technician, the reductions. Further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't quite understand it just yet. So there's two positions.
That's correct.
The Level Two Technician, no one's in that role currently.
Not at the moment.
But you will ultimately, or you plan on hiring someone as part of your organiz, organizational structure?
My plan is to move one person up who's a Level One at the moment into that position, which opens up.
And that, so that person, he or she, will go up to fifty-eight thousand?
That is correct.
And the Level One Technician that you're changing, from seventy-one thousand down to forty, whatever thousand?
That position never really, I mean, it existed as far as on the books, but we never filled that position.
Will that position be filled?
Yes, it will.
Even though it's never been filled?
That's correct.
And can you explain why the, why that person, Level One Technician, was supposedly had a salary of seventy-two thousand dollars?
It was not, it was a meant, it was in the books as a Network Manager, I believe, for seventy-one thousand, but it was never filled, never used.
Further discussion?
I mean, when you're saying, when you're saying nev, was it ever used, like ever, ever, or just this year?
Never, ever, I don't know why that thing should create.
And, uh, Lee, in the budget for the, in your budget material that you presented for, for next year?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any other changes or variations to this in that submission?
I do, of the forty-one, eight-eight-two, I'm, it's that salary because the other Level One Tech currently is making that salary, so they should match. Next year, um, when I looked at the averages for salaries, that position on the average pays forty-three, if I was gonna ask for forty-three.
Yeah, I guess, in, in my, uh, in my opinion, and this speaks a bit to what Councilman Brickner was talking about. I think it's very difficult for us to sit here and talk about specific positions and what those salaries could or should be, short of doing a comprehensive wage study analysis. And I appreciate the fact that you looked at Glassdoor, and you looked at Monster, and you tried to do your own research, uh, in comparing to other communities perhaps, I think that's, that's helpful. But, uh, it's, it's startling to me that we've got a couple of positions that are listed at seventy-one thousand seven hundred, and we're proposing to go, I don't know, how, twenty, thirty percent lower. And whether those positions are needed or not needed, I'm, I'm still a bit, you know, I'm still a bit confused. Um, and it looks as if you're just saying two of the seventy-two thousand dollar positions should be greatly reduced.
That's what you're saying.
And you're also saying that, um, going forward, you're not looking to increase any of these others? Any other salaries? And are you comfortable with the others that are listed at the seventy-one-seven? The senior, 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 are they all at a salary that you think is appropriate, adequate?
For the budget, I was asking for seventy-five.
So you are asking for an increase, huh?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that, that's what I was trying to get at earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, I, 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 my, my, uh, feeling is that I think until we know more about how our, our, how our wages and salaries, um, uh, are, whether they're in line or not in line with, uh, and, and the only way to do that is to do a comprehensive study. Uh, we have, uh, far too many examples of, we should do this, we should do this, some of the positions we've talked about, and, and not necessarily with yours, but it's not tying to specific job responsibilities decreasing or anything such as that, and I, I would not be comfortable with, uh, certainly any sort of increases, I'd be a little bit uncomfortable decreases too, because I'm not sure those, that's the right answer, um, and.
But, and, and another way of looking at it, we have a department head coming before us, saying that he, you are comfortable with doing this.
Yes, yeah, I, I believe that we are right in line for the most part with salaries in other comparable counties and.
And you change your job descriptions too of some of these positions?
That is correct.
So that's gonna be different, right off the bat, so it's not apples to apples.
Right, my goal is just to get two Level One Technicians in so we can address more of the issues in the county more readily, and put those, I don't wanna say smarter, but the more educated people in line to fix issues like telephone problems that are going on, but we're so distracted with just the minor stuff right now.
Should be an interesting budget session if we're not gonna move to adjust any, um, wages and salaries based upon the, the lack of a, a comprehensive wage study. Lee, how long you been here?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years? All right, there's a motion and second on the floor, um, for the Form 144, um, to lower these two, Level One, Level Two Technicians. Um, can we get a roll call on that motion, Madam Auditor?
Yes. Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
No.
Councilmember Paparod? Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Reba?
Um, no.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brickner?
No.
Where's the VP, he makes the call.
All right, sounds like we'll see ya.
It dies when it's tied. Does it die with the tie?
Are we actually?
I've never seen it tied.
Harold, it dies with the tie?
Yeah.
It dies with the tie vote?
There's not four votes, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, if someone wants to make another motion on a separate, with a slight change, that can be done, but the motion itself is.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't sure how, I've never been in a tie, I was just asking.
I, I, I think to have a comprehensive discussion on it, I think it'd be a more appropriate time to talk about it, we're talking about wages specifically for the budget.
And he can hire, he can hire someone at a less wage now, so.
Twenty-six years.
He has been here twenty-six years, how ma, how long have you been the, uh, director of the department?
Two months.
How long?
Two months.
Oh, my goodness, but you've been in the trenches.
I have been in the trenches.
No, one department head.
What he is telling us is that he needs lower-level technicians to take care of some of those smaller problems that have all of a sudden become larger. And, uh, that's taking up more time than any's, uh, you have these two people, you're going to be hiring these people now?
I will be hiring, yes, for this.
I, uh, you talk about wanting to listen to department heads telling you what they wanna have. I think we, we should be receptive.
I just thought we were kinda following a pattern, we didn't wanna listen to the one department head before us, you know, to reorganize, so why would we, you know, change just fifteen minutes later?
Well, quite truthfully. Quite truthfully, this gentleman is, uh, if you look at our budget coming forth in, in the next year, uh, he is offering us, uh, some, some much-needed leverage possibly, that, uh.
So, I mean, just to clarify, Lee, and welcome to your new position. Uh, the Level Two Technician, that, that was your position?
That is correct.
That is, you're promoting somebody up?
That's correct.
To that, so you're just, what is that person currently making right now?
She makes forty-one, eight-eight-two.
So if you promote her up, you're gonna promote her up to seventy-one thousand dollars?
No, I'm putting her to fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Without us even changing anything, he can do that now, the way the sal, salary ordinance is written, so he could take her up to seventy-one, but he could also do the fifty-eight.
Promote her to, yeah, no.
Right, I mean, he can pay less, that's what we just covered. So.
But he gotta do it for you to consult.
The other one, the Level One Technician, is the position that's never been filled.
That is correct.
So it's not like, you know, a month or two, I mean, never been filled, so.
So could that position be filled at the lower amount without the 144?
I agree with that, yes. But he would still have to come back to change it because it states the higher salary in the salary ordinance. But you will have to approve it. That language only gives department heads the flexibility to fill vacancies at a lower rate. But you still, you still set the salary order, so he still has to get your approval at some point.
My concern is with the county growing, with the number of employees we have, we, we just don't wanna have the staff to take care of the piddly. Every day, my keyboard is broken, I need a new one tasked. And I hate to have somebody who has just spent five years in college replacing a mouse.
Let me, uh, let me ask you this, Lee, are, the number of positions listed on the 144, is that the number of employees that your department will lead through next year at least? Nobody, nobody?
I'm not asking for anybody, except for what we've asked here for the cyber security. Which is listed already on the one.
Yes, already.
It is.
That's, that's a brand, that's a brand. So that's eighty thousand new dollars.
Correct, but it was on last year's 144.
So we're all, it's, it's fine, I, Sylvia, I think it's actually fine, I think he.
He can still do what he needs to.
Can do what he wants to do, so.
You still have the power to do that, and you just have to come back and see us for approval?
Yes, but I don't wanna hire somebody who you don't approve.
Actually.
That's kind of embarrassing.
Actually, a budget fine is.
Well, I think it is pre-approved at the higher rate, you're just looking for us to approve it at the lower rate.
Yes, I would need to bring in somebody to grunt work, making what the college educated.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Appreciate.
I say move forward and come back to us, that's my opinion.
Got an ordinance out there for you, just, uh, grab a copy of it, take advantage of it.
I can't hire somebody, and then you say, oh, yeah, no, 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 you're not gonna pay him.
All right.
So, uh, just for further clarification, on the Form 144, we talk about reducing the seventy-one, seven-seventeen down.
Correct.
But we don't talk about the new eighty thousand dollar position?
It's not new.
It's just never been replaced.
It's just never been filled. It was on last year. It's just never filled, we never found a person.
There's no reason.
So I might ask, why is that on the Form 144?
So it was approved last year.
Is that through cyber security?
Yes.
Yeah, that was approved last year.
So that's, okay, so I got it, so that's simply a title change?
Yeah.
All right, I think we're good here. All right, I think we're good here. Assessor John Snyder.
Clear as mud.
He knows what to do.
I think, yeah.
Make it happen.
Vicki'll take care of you, Lee. It'll be all right. It'll be all right.
We'll, we'll do it then.
Sales disclosure fund additional thirty, thirty-two thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars. You can track our services. Reason paying for annual support and maintenance for.
You in the acronyms this evening?
Oh, that's a word. I think a name. For who?
For A-CAMA.
A-CAMA system. All right, thirty-two thousand, this.
It's our software, our software. Our assessor software.
And that's interchangeable with, with the county system and everything?
I don't know, you say it's, it's its own separate, uh, its own separate, uh, silo, I guess you'd call it, but I don't, I think they talk to each other, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They do.
I'm not, I'm not changing software. This is just paying the bill, our annual, uh, maintenance fees for our current software.
I'd make the motion, second. We got a motion.
The motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Was that, John, was that just an increase that you didn't anticipate, or?
No, uh, we, we use this fund, uh, from time to time when it grows a balance, it hits thirty-eight thousand, almost thirty-nine thousand. So we just kinda look for that as relief of pressure in paying that bill.
Is that, this about the time that bill comes due?
Yeah, it comes due between now and the end of the year. I think it's in the fall. Are we in the fall yet, or in autumn? Yes, it's coming due soon. It'll free up, uh, money that we can continue with our, um, appraisal ordering that we've been doing en masse for, uh, some big box appeals that we have. So this frees up money that we can use for, for the, for that certain, to pay those appraisers.
What are you sprinkling?
Motion's a second on the floor. Any further discussion? We get a roll call on additional, Madam Auditor?
Um, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
EMA General Fund. There's a transfer, twelve thousand dollars from siren maintenance and repairs to other equipment. Reason for the purchase of equipment. Portable industrial pallet scale, safety man basket for forklift, extra tall safety cones for staging and developments, deployments.
So make the motion on transfer.
There's a motion on the floor for transfer?
I'll second it, start discussion.
Second, discussion.
I'd like to know which, what is, uh, portable industrial scale?
That is for, we, we started organizing our supplies that we deploy, uh, into what they call Gaylord, so the big poly cubes. And so when we're loading those on a trailer, we need to know what the weight distribution is, and sometimes that changes. So the goal is, this, this is a big scale that you can put a pallet on to weigh it, and then those would get marked, and then as they would be loaded onto a trailer to deploy somewhere, say, there's a flood. If you don't have that trailer's weight distributed right, it'll, it won't stay on the road. It can fly off the road, and you could have an accident. So we need to know what those weights are, and those weights can change, so this allows us to do that.
As long as you're not getting overweight fines.
No.
Uh, safety, what, what's the breakdown of each individual thing here? Like, how much is that? How much is the basket? And how much is the safe, the safety cone?
The basket is, um, six hundred and fifty dollars. That's, uh, an attachment for forklift, uh, because we sometimes have to do work up high, and we don't have any means to do that. You can't ride the forks because that's an OSHA violation, so that lets us.
I've seen a lot of YouTube videos on that.
The scale is, um, two thousand four hundred dollars. The cones, which we need twenty of, those are sixty-three dollars a piece. We've had to deploy those, they're, they're weighted. Um, we've had to deploy those a lot, um, helping the health department and a lot of different people this year where we're having to set 'em up. There's not enough of them to go around, so we're, we're buying some so that we have some. They're also stackable so they can be put in a small space and not take up, um, room. Then there's a, which I don't think you named, but there's a, uh, storage bin cabinet, so we have a lot of parts and accessories. Um, it's a big steel cabinet with five full doors, and it's full of, um, the, uh, the plastic bins so that we can sort and have parts, um, sorted and ready to go as we need them instead of throwing in a pile. So that's a pretty large cabinet. We're gonna put that upstairs in order to organize our stuff.
So that's pretty expensive, I assume?
It is. I'm sorry, that's, um, one thousand four hundred sixty-five.
So you're moving some extra money out from what I'm seeing. Um, are, are we gonna be in trouble inside, inside your maintenance and repair?
No, they're still way good, okay.
Should be good. Yeah, we have some parts that we're gonna buy towards the end of the year of year, um, computer boards and things, which will take up the rest of what's there, um, what we bought. We've kind of tried to stock up on spare parts, so we're in pretty good shape right now. We'll get in the next year with that.
So you're wanting to move twelve thousand, and what you have, what you have told us levels up to five thousand or so?
Yeah, well, it's more than that, but, um.
Five or six?
There's also, well, there's miscellaneous things on there.
Yeah, fifty-seven seventy-five is what I hear.
We purchased, uh, three thousand two hundred dollars worth of battery packs for the AEDs because they were short on them. Facilities was replacing those.
How long do those last?
They should last three to five years depending on the conditions that they're in, um, and then we have to replace them. So those each have a large cartridge battery, which is more expensive, um, and then there's a smaller battery pack that also goes in there. We just, uh, had to order a, a set of those, which was an additional seven hundred and sixty dollars, uh, in order to make sure that those are working. Those are inspected by facilities monthly, and then as they need those batteries, they tell us what they need. Whether it's that, we've also had to order the, uh, defibrillator pads. Um, those are good for two years, and they expire, but if they're used once, you have to replace them. So it's, it's a pretty.
How often do those get used?
At the jail, they've been used, and the juvenile center, probably for the most part, the others are, are not very often, but there they do. And then there's some miscellaneous items. There's, we need a bench for the women's locker room. Uh, whoever designed it was probably a man. Who was the bench in the men's locker room, not in the women's, so as the ladies.
You gotta get them a couch.
Yeah, would take a shower. They have no place to sit to put their clothes on, so we're buying some things like that in order to make sure they have the same things that the men have.
Lance, you're comfortable in the siren maintenance and repair account, that you've got enough to take care of needs, and all sirens and all that are all operational in an order?
What we have will get us through the rest of this year, and then next year, you know, we'll carry on with anything additional that we need.
What is the balance of that?
Twenty thousand?
Four seventy-one, yeah.
So again, the remaining amount that'll be.
It's right on their screen.
We'll use the rest of your, my computer boards and other parts.
Oh, it fits on there?
For those sirens. We did a lot of work last year, uh, and it was by the design, our, our volunteers, the ones who worked on those. We had a lot of problems before with batteries that were bursting in the cold and the heat, um, so they put what they're called as battery blankets on all the, they're like a big car battery, uh, to protect them. In the winter, they're heated. In the summer, they help insulate so that they don't get too hot, and a lot of different things like that. That's helped us to be able to shift, you know, and not maybe spend money on some of those things, but then now spend more toward the computer boards and things that control. We also upgraded both of the servers. There's one at nine-one-one and one at EMA that control the sirens, so we had to upgrade those.
All right, I'm just gonna give, uh, have an opportunity to go to the last meeting at EMA, the quarterly meeting. Uh, give kudos to Lance. Um, first time I've been in the building in, in a while. Been there a couple times, and it's night and day for the first time, uh, that we stepped foot in there, about four years ago, five years ago now. And also, um, there's about, what, seventy-six to eighty thousand dollars in, that totals up in volunteer work that the county doesn't have to pay for. Uh, and getting a chance to meet some of these volunteers that work at EMA, uh, very committed, very, uh, smart. And, um, I think the county is fortunate to have, uh, um, you know, not just Lance there, but what he's done with EMA and also these volunteers, it don't feel a lot of recognition.
Well, second that, a hundred percent.
Just like to share that.
Thank you. All right, um, all in favor of the transfer? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Animal Shelter General Fund. There's a couple transfers. Um, well, there's one on the Animal Shelter General Fund, four thousand dollars from salaries to hourly, three thousand dollars from lease payment to hourly, three thousand dollars from track services to hourly. Reason transfer needed to cover costs of increase in hourly to pay, to maintain shelter staff. There's also the Animal Shelter Fee Fund. There's a transfer, two thousand dollars from salaries to hourly, four thousand dollars from advertising to hourly. Reason transfer needed to cover costs of increase in hourly to pay to maintain shelter staff. There's two transfers in front of you. Looks like to cover some hourly. Hello?
Motion on both transfers?
Motion's a second on transfers. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thanks for waiting around. That was.
In twenty minutes, guys. Thank you.
It was a long one. I don't know. I don't know why Joy doesn't put these in alphabetical order, you know, I don't. Eh, I'm a shelter. All right, so, Commissioner, there's a CCD, the Chemical Capital Development Fund, a transfer in front of you. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand from building maintenance to legal, thirty-five thousand from maintenance agreements to legal. Reason litigation settlement funds. So.
Second.
Motion's a second in front of you. Discussion. All in front, all in favor of the transfer? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Second reading.
Here is a term that is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore be yourself a quarter term council of quarter term. Therefore, we're specific testing and following additional terms to be applied by appropriate items made before the purposes discussed by subject to the laws governing the same. General fund, total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in additional preparations. Tax sales dues fund, four thousand dollars. Sales disclosure fund, maybe two thousand one sixty-six. Memorial other house fund, covering debt, fifty-seven thousand nine fifty-seven hundred five cents. Jurassic is discovery group fund, two thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, BASSIA hardship grant fund, thirty thousand dollars, and PCCRC tourism, eight thousand dollars. And that concludes.
All right, second reading. Um, entertain a motion, a second reading. Motion approved, second reading?
Second.
Second. Get a roll call on second reading, Madam Auditor?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
All right, attorneys report. Long one. You know, we're here Thursday, right?
Yes.
Then I think Tuesday and Thursday. All right, any other matter that maybe come, properly come for the council?
Can I ask a question? Uh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna suggest, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed mediation settlement agreement entered into on August the fourth, twenty-twenty-one, in the matter of the Porter County Board of Commissioners versus fifteen North Franklin.
There's a motion on the floor. I, I'm just clarifying what we did in earlier, motion a second. Um, uh, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Buzzitt?
No.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. President, I have a question, and this is more for Harold, maybe it's for us. With all this stuff going on at Lake Mission Gate, with another spill at the Mills, is there anything this board or council can do to help the situation? Slap 'em on the wrist, something? Is there anything, or are we even interested in discussing something like that? Is that out of our realm?
I think as, as the fiscal body of the county, I, and not the executive branch, I don't, I don't see that there's much that can be done. I certainly can look into it, I mean, the, I could certainly look into it depending on what the thoughts of the board are.
It's getting old. I mean, every few, every few months, it's, it's another spill. What would you need, a motion to do something like that?
I don't, I don't, I, I don't necessarily think so. I can certainly, you know, talk to you after the meeting about what your thoughts are, and, and see if there's anything done. I don't think there's gonna be much that this body can do with the fiscal body. I'm not seeing that, I don't wanna rule that out.
That's what I assumed, but I wanted to ask, and I don't know if any other council member has interest. This is the first I brought it up.
I think it's deplorable, but I, I, everybody is crying out about it as they well should. However, I heard a reply from the Mills saying that they have the legal rights to dump a certain amount of chemical into the water. And I, I guess that must be a federal rule or something, and I think it's deplorable, deplorable. That's how they feel. That's what I heard on, on the radio.
So we should just stay out of it, there's?
I'm, I'm sure Harold can look at if there's a resolution or something, if you guys, if it was the interest of the council to, you know, wag our finger at US Steel to, you know, to look at upgrading their, their systems or something. I mean, yeah, obviously dumping into a waterway like that is, you know, it's.
Or a containment method. If this accident happens, what can you do to contain it?
I, I know that, I know the mayor of Portage was in immediate contact with, with, um, US Steel and the EPA, I believe, Senator Tally. And I, you know, I, I think the, the people that probably have more direct contact and leverage are, you know, in base, so, um, but, but, yeah, you're more willing to have a conversation with Harold if there's some kind of, you know, action that you feel that would help the situation, have a conversation. So, um, we are back here, five-thirty, to start second reading on Tuesday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Sure. You wanna do Thursday? So, all right, um, anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed!
Me!
Opposed? What?